Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 12th. Calling this meeting to order and Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, council member Coco.
Here.
Council member Soltes.
I'm here.
Council member Hardhausen.
Present.
Council member Simo.
I'm here.
Council member Porter.
Here.
Mayor Proton Smith.
I'm here as well.
Mayor Wagner.
I am here.
We have a quorum here on.
Thank you, Krista. If everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much for that. And next up is approval of agenda. Regan, do we have any changes for the agenda tonight?
No, sir.
Great. I'd look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Christina and seconded by Joe. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. It is unanimous to for the approval of the agenda. Next up is public communication. We have our own Dana Newt's, our Chamber Executive, to give us a quarterly update of the Covington Chamber of Commerce. Welcome, Dana. I see you in the audience. You are on mute, Dana, and welcome. There you are.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
But yes, good to see you too. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council, for this opportunity to share with you what's happening at the Chamber. It has been a very busy few months since I gave you my last report. We have grown our membership. We have one hundred and forty-eight members right now. We hosted in-person events from June through September, but for now we have returned to virtual events. Our next luncheon will be this Thursday, October fourteenth, from eleven thirty to one, and our speaker will be Sarah Boobin of the Thrive Wellness Clinic, who will talk to us about the importance of mental health and wellness in the workplace. Next Thursday, we are doing a virtual happy hour online from five to six. And our November events will also be virtual. We are hoping to return to in-person events in December, but of course, that depends on COVID and what happens, and our board will be making that decision in November as to whether or not we can go back to in-person events. Another event I'm very excited to tell you about is the COVID Town Hall, which will be next Tuesday. It will be virtual from six to seven PM. We are partnering with MultiCare Valley Medical Center and the Maple Valley Black Diamond Chamber to host a town hall called COVID Myths: What You Need to Know. Our hospitals are overtaxed with many, many patients, and it seems like there's a lot of disinformation that is still going around the internet and around our communities. And so we are hoping to be able to answer some of those questions with our medical experts. So I would encourage you to attend if you can. Please share this information. There is an event page on all four of those hosts on Facebook. We also have it in our newsletter, and we did a news release today. The city has also been sharing it online. So thank you very much for your support with that. I think this is a really important opportunity for us to to work together. We are making it very clear that we are providing useful factual information and not taking a position. We understand that healthcare choices are very personal and very individual, but we want to get the information out there and direct people. We also will be recording that information or that webinar. It will be posted on social media and on YouTube, so anybody that misses it can watch it there. We have two new board members. I am proud to tell you that George Frazier, who is the Vice President for College Advancement at Green River College and the Executive Director of the Green River College Foundation, has joined our board, as has Elaine Cruzat, who is the Studio Manager at Eat the Frog Fitness. We are about to send ballots out for next year's Board of Directors. Unfortunately, we have two long-term board members, including Mayor Wagner and Adam Turley of Outpatient Physical Therapy, who will be rotating off the board because they have hit their term limit. So we're very sad to see them go. We hope they will still support us and and serve as advisors, but I'm excited to share that with the approval of our board and our members, Attorney Pat Hannas of Hanns Irvine Prothrow in Kent, and Lori Paxton, who is the Director of Career and Technical Education for the Kent School District, will be joining the board in January. In terms of membership, it is that time of year where we start doing our renewals. Last week, the board approved a few new membership levels. The idea is to give people more options and for us to start looking at some higher level sponsorships. We believe that what we offer is very valuable and very important, and we want the Chamber to grow. So in order to do that, we want to get some higher level sponsors. We also want to provide our sponsors at there are investors at the thousand-dollar level and above with some payment options. So for the first time, we're going to be offering quarterly semi-annual and annual payment options for those higher level investors. We have a new committee, Clean, Safe, and Welcome City Committee. You may have heard from Justin Van Landshut about that. He is the owner of Covington Place, and he's very passionate about this. When he left our board last month, it was because he was very excited about, you know, he's very action oriented, and he really wants to help clean up Covington. So his focus will be on that, helping businesses report property crimes and clean up their properties, using environmental design to improve safety on their properties and and things of that nature. The committee will be open to anyone who's interested in participating. They don't have to be a Chamber member. They can be a resident. They can be a business owner. Anybody that's interested in helping. He has really shaped this committee in a very short period of time. We have weekly meetings to just kind of check in, and everybody has a different assignment. So I'm very excited about this. I think this will be great for our community and particularly those businesses who aren't Chamber members. I want them to know that we care about their businesses, even if they have chosen not to be a member for whatever reason, or maybe nobody's ever asked them to join. I want the community to know that this is something that's very important to us, and I think getting involved in this committee will will help us get some more visibility. Next year, we are talking, I am talking with the board about a couple of new events, which I hope will happen. One that we've talked about is I'm calling for now the Covington Makers Market. It would be similar to a farmer's market. It would be open to local artisans, and it would be a once a year or twice a year kind of event. It would be something designed specifically not to compete with Maple Valley Farmer's Market, but to complement it. So it would probably be off-season so that it doesn't compete with their time and their vendors. I've done some preliminary research, and I've already heard from seventeen businesses that would fit into this category that are very interested in participating. So I think we have a real a real possibility of making this happen. So I still need board approval. There's still a lot of work to be done, but I've got a team of people who are excited about working on this, and I would love for it to be become a new Covington event. Something else we're planning on doing is a Health and Wellness Fair sponsored by MultiCare next year. It would be a summer event, and we're hoping it might be toward the end of June, so it could possibly serve as a kickoff to ready, set, play. It would be held at MultiCare at the clinic in their parking lot, but it would be open to any local health and wellness vendor, so it wouldn't be restricted to to MultiCare and their and their providers. So very excited about the option to do that. We will do some additional planning and budgeting with the board next month at our half-day retreat. And I am open to questions if anybody has anything they'd like to share or anything they want to ask.
Does anybody have any questions for Dana? Sean.
Well, not really a question so much as a comment. I really do appreciate all the energy that's going into the chamber. You know, despite everything related to COVID and and the difficulty that's causing it, it looks like there's a lot of really good work going on and and excitement around the chamber. So that that's really I really appreciate that. So it would have been easy to just lose some momentum and and come back after the pandemic's over. But anyway, I I think it's really, really good that what you're doing and adjusting to the the new circumstances. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilmember. I appreciate that very much. You know, our businesses need us now more than ever. Our community needs us now more than ever, and we are up for the challenge. We've got new board members who are excited. We've got committee members that are excited, new members. There's just I I see possibility. So I'm 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 excited, and thank you for, thank you for the compliment. I appreciate it.
Anybody else have questions for Dana? Dana, I want to express my thanks to you and everybody on the board for all the hard work they do and all the businesses and everybody that chips in. And for Justin, starting this new group to help bring awareness to Covington and Justin's passion and everybody that's joining that group, the passion they have to see Covington grow and be clean and safe is just admirable. So please pass on my thanks as well.
I will. Thank you very much for the opportunity to to update you tonight.
Thanks, Dana. It's a great update. Have a great evening.
All right. Thanks. You too.
All right. Next up is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the City Council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting is prohibited. Before I begin, we do have a public hearing later on tonight, which is for to write public testimony for the adoption for interim zoning for House Bill twelve twenty. So if you want your comments heard during that public hearing for that topic, please wait for the public hearing on that. So with that, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address Council tonight for any other topic? If you do, just raise your hand.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
We do have one call-in listener tonight. If they would like to raise their hand, they would dial star nine to raise their hand.
Okay. So anybody that's wishing to address Council during this first of two public comments periods, raise your hand or star nine to raise their hand on the phone. Seeing nobody raise their hand, we will have a second opportunity towards the end of our council meeting. And with that, we will move into approval of the consent agenda, which is consisting of items C one through C three. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Beth, seconded by Jennifer to approve the consent agenda, item C one through C three. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote? Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. It is unanimous to approve the consent agenda. Next up is new business item number one, which is a public hearing, and this is to receive public testimony. So tonight, we have a public hearing to receive public testimony from the public regarding the adoption of ordinance number zero nine dash two zero two one, which imposed interim zoning regulations for a period of six months in response to House Bill one two two zero. This being the date set and proper notices having been posted and published in accordance with state and local law, the public hearing is hereby declared open. And Ryan Harriman is providing the staff report on this item. Ryan, welcome.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City of Covington, City Council, Ryan Harriman, Planning Manager. I'm going to make my comments brief because we've talked about this a few times already, and because there is a very good hockey game about to start, and I really want to watch that. So my comments are going to be brief. This public hearing is to to let the public provide testimony on ordinance number zero nine dash twenty twenty-one, which the council adopted on September fourteenth of this year. This is in regards to House Bill twelve twenty. And for that doesn't allow cities to prohibit transitional housing or permanent supportive housing in any zones where residentially residential dwelling units or hotels are allowed. Also, in September, cities can't prohibit emergency shelters or indoor emergency shelters at any zones where hotels are allowed, except for cities that have adopted an ordinance authorizing indoor emergency shelters and indoor emergency housing in a majority of zones within one mile of transit. So what this is, is a public hearing so that we can collect feedback from the public and from and from council and get kind of some direction so we can take this back to the Planning Commission as part of their twenty twenty-two work plan. As mentioned in previous meetings, we're still waiting for the data from the Department of Commerce. That's why this is an interim measure brought to you. So with that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ryan. The ground rules for public comment during the public hearing are as follows. When your name is called, please give your name and state whether you are a resident of the City of Covington. Please limit your comments to no more than four minutes. The city clerk will set a timer that will go off when your time is up. When the timer goes off, please wind up promptly. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address the City Council tonight for this public hearing? If there's anybody in the audience, please raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, press star nine. If you wish to provide comments for this public hearing. Seeing nobody raise their hand for this, I will call that this public meeting is this public hearing is closed. And with that, does Council have any questions for Ryan? Sean.
Yeah, thanks, Ryan. I appreciate your time on this. So I just have a question. If if state law prohibits us from basically prohibiting this the transitional housing, emergency housing in any zone with dwellings or hotels, what what actually, what's the role for the city? What I mean, what what actually, what are we taking feedback on, I guess?
So with the adoption of the interim regulations, the the council adopted items to go into the code on a temporary basis that have the the capacity for allowing those uses in those zones. What has to happen is the council eventually, once the Planning Commission reviews the information and has the data from the Department of Commerce, and there's a recommendation to the City Council, then the City Council can move forward with formally adopting something in line with whatever direction you folks provide. There really isn't much we can do from an ordinance standpoint than what we've already done in the interim regulations. Based on everything that I've seen and heard from other jurisdictions, a lot of them just adopted interim regulations until the Department of Commerce was provided the data so that they could send it to the cities to work on their comprehensive plan updates and their housing element updates. So we don't have the information yet, and we're looking forward to receiving that sometime in twenty twenty-two.
Thanks. I I appreciate that. So one other question, Mr. Mayor, if I I might. So with that data, what will that allow us to do then?
That's a very good question, Councilmember. So what the data, it's really unknown what the data is actually going to provide us. And so we're going to have to take a look at the data and see exactly what our proportional share is within the City of Covington for Southeast King County. If you remember, we created kind of a supplemental version and use that as our methodology, and Commerce has actually used that with our jurisdictions to come up with a interim way of working that method out. So in the future, when we see something come up from Commerce, we'll get the numbers from them, then we can determine what our our need is in the city for those uses.
And if I can maybe just add that Ryan obviously did an amazing job, but this is one of those things where where the cart was put a put ahead of the horse, right? So the state said, cities, you've got to do this by September thirtieth. But the information you need to fully do it, Department of Commerce has to develop. That's what the law said. Department of Commerce hasn't even gotten to it yet. And so cities are past the deadline, so we're having to enact these interim regs and keep waiting for Department of Commerce to catch up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Ryan? Do you want me to ask you very slow questions? See, no, I'm only kidding, Ryan.
Looking at my watch, Mr. Mayor.
I know you're not. All right. If nobody else has any questions, Ryan, thank you very much. Is there anything else you need from us tonight? This is just a public hearing to gather information, but anything from Council that you need tonight?
If the council wants to provide a direction, we would love to have direction, but when we look at this from a commerce standpoint, as Regan mentioned, it's we're still early in the process, and we don't have the data. So there's really not much we can do at this point, but I do appreciate being able to speak with you this evening.
Great. Thanks, Ryan. You have a great evening, sir.
As well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is new business item number two. Our great city managers presenting our two thousand twenty twenty-two budget message. Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is always an exciting time of year to present the budget to you and begin our budget deliberations as we work into our budget workshop. You all have the budget message and your and your workbooks, and so I'm happy to be able to present the proposed twenty twenty-two budget to you, the City Council, for your review and consideration. As our city continues to emerge from the pandemic and economic unease of the past year, this budget will propel the city forward by making investments in IT, cybersecurity, personnel, increasing reserves, and continued capital development. So these were kind of the focuses for this year's budget. The budget estimates presented for your review continue to reflect a conservative approach and recognition of continued response to the effects of the pandemic. In response to the effects and as part of the upcoming budget workshop, I will begin discussing the ARPA funds, which we've received two point nine million for this year. So we'll discuss how the council wants to allocate those, and it's anticipated that we'll receive another two point nine million next year that we will talk about funding at that point. On a long-term outlook, the council's been a wonderful stewards of city funds, and we've been able to build up as a result healthy general fund reserves. These allow for unforeseen expenses that may occur, but have also continued to contribute to reserves that reflect our long-term goals that you've said as a council. So in twenty twenty-two, you'll notice that we've created a new reserve fund in our general fund, which is a police contract reserve. And we funded that at one hundred and fifteen thousand. That's to help offset anticipated changes that are due to contract negotiations that inevitably come each year during reconciliation with the King County Sheriff's Office. What you're not seeing there is another reserve fund that we created. We're calling it the Vehicle Replacement Reserve Fund. We put a balance of two hundred thousand in that, and that's to help prepare for our anticipated vehicle replacement costs, which are quite a bit more than that two hundred thousand. But we wanted to start building this reserve fund up as our fleet is beginning to get older, and we anticipate several problems down the road. We wanted to make sure we're putting these one-time excess revenues into these reserve funds to prepare for the future. The city's long-range forecast continues to project strong retail sales, but reduced food and services collections in the short term. Residential development is forecasted to remain stable over twenty twenty-one projections, which will help with REIT, real estate excise tax, property tax, and state shared revenues that we receive as a proportional basis based on our population. Reviewing the forecast, the general fund looks healthy through twenty twenty-six, but begins to dip into our reserves starting in twenty twenty-five. The street fund, as you're all aware, continues to struggle and will be one of our major topics of discussion at the budget workshop regarding the level of continued subsidy from the general fund. The Development Review Fund and Surface Water Management Fund both remain strong. So I wanted to go over real quickly the twenty twenty-two budget strategies for this budget. First was to bring staffing up to appropriate service levels after our hiring freeze that we had in place, and after holding several vacancies that we've had in the city. So you'll see some additional staff being proposed, staff positions. I wanted to make sure that we're IT-ready and that we prioritize cybersecurity. You've seen those issues cripple private organizations and local governments throughout the throughout the country these last couple of years, and we want to make sure our defenses are in place. Then next, to build up our reserve funds, we started building those up about five or six years ago, and we've been able to purchase parks, purchase our town center property, and do other things with those funds, do some things at the Aquatic Center. And so we've spent those down, and this year we're able to start building those up again. And then, of course, to prioritize and allocate our ARPA funds. And we'll again review those at the budget workshop. So I'll quickly review each fund. The general fund is first, and for twenty twenty-two, we're forecasting a slight increase, a point one percent increase in revenues. On the expenditure side, the budget is ten point three percent or just over one point two million dollars higher than estimated actuals for twenty twenty-one. This is doing part to an increase in the police contract, COLAs that are included, healthcare costs, and programs beginning to operate at higher levels. As you're all aware, much of our programming did not operate the last year, and so we're planning on doing that much more in the coming year. So I'm recommending sixteen decision cards in the general fund totaling just over nine hundred and sixty thousand. That's five hundred and fifty thousand in one-time costs and four hundred and twelve in ongoing costs. And there's a list of each of those decision cards under each of these funds. In the street fund, the franchise fees and vehicle license fees are forecasted to remain flat. There will be a minor increase of about five point one percent over twenty twenty-one estimated actuals for fuel taxes. Base budget expenditures before decision cards are one point four million, which is an increase of just over thirteen thousand from twenty twenty-one. So I'm recommending four decision cards totaling sixty thousand. That's fifty-six thousand in one-time costs and thirty-seven hundred dollars in ongoing costs. In our Development Services Fund for twenty twenty-two, you'll see that we're forecasting a forty-three point two percent reduction in revenues over our twenty twenty-one estimates. These estimates are based on plots with lots that are ready to build, commercial projects that are in the process, and conservative averages on other type, other permit types. Base budget expenditures are three point seven million, which is a decrease from twenty twenty-one estimated actuals of about thirteen point two percent. It's important to remember that the Development Services Fund ebbs and flows based on development projects, and these types of changes are expected year to year. And so we're seeing a year where high revenues went high, and we received those revenues, and then they, a lot of times, they pay for the work in the next year, and we have those kind of patterns in the Development Services Fund. And and you'll recall that that is not a general fund fund. And no decision cards were submitted from Development Services. For surface water management or swim, revenues for swim are increasing seven percent over twenty twenty-one estimates due to the adopted rate increase. Base budget expenditures are three million, which is an increase of about eighteen, just over eighteen percent due to swim maintenance projects we have upcoming. I'm recommending three decision cards, a total one hundred and twelve thousand. That's twenty-five thousand in one-time costs and just over eighty-six thousand in ongoing costs, mostly due to a new hiring position, the GIS coordinator there for those ongoing costs. In the Capital Investment Fund, I'm recommending two decision cards with the next expected city contribution of just around three hundred and sixty-four thousand, close to three hundred and sixty-five thousand. Both decision cards will be funded from the general fund, the Welcome Park decision card. And I'm recommending that it's funded out of the Town Center Reserve Fund. With the Equipment Replacement Fund, I'm recommending five decision cards that have been approved in the other above funds because they're parts of of different funds for the the equipment is, and that will be a contributing user fee charges to the Equipment Replacement Fund to accumulate sufficient funds to replace that equipment when the time comes that that needs to be replaced. Overall, the proposed twenty twenty-two budget provides the resources to serve our community, improve our infrastructure, and improve overall quality of life. This budget demonstrates our ongoing commitment to providing responsible fiscal management and continuing to position ourselves to meet the ongoing challenges and the priorities that the City Council sets. So I want to thank our team for doing, again, a wonderful job on putting this budget together, and specifically our finance team, who's always exceptional. And I want to thank the Council for your commitment to being wise stewards of these public funds. And we again continue to look forward to deliberations and to our budget workshop, where we'll dive into each of these funds in much more detail in the coming weeks. If you have any questions on this, I'm happy to address those.
Anybody have any questions? I know that we will be meeting on Saturday, October 30th for our budget workshop to go into it in more details. Beth.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question with the the reassessments of property values and the increase in taxes on that end. Is that included in this 1% increase under the property taxes estimating being 3.1 million? Or is that assuming that there's a lift? Lift? What?
A levy lid lift from the city?
Yeah.
No, it doesn't assume a levy lid lift from the city.
Okay. So that takes into account the increase in property taxes because I know that a lot of us are going to be paying quite a bit more than just 1% based on the increased value of our homes.
I, I think Casey, Casey's got her hat raised. Do you want to mention something there, Casey?
Oh, I will mention that this does include the 1% that we're allowed to take, but I do recognize that we are going up more than that due to the assessed value. I'm actually going to have a revenue hearing at our next meeting on the 26th and I'll be going over all of the property taxes then, but I'm happy to answer any questions now if you've got questions on that.
I guess I was just wondering if, if that was included and if that's going to change what it seems like it would go up more than that, more than just a 1% increase and how that would impact. But I guess we can wait to hear what that'll look like from at the next meeting.
Sure. It is going up the 1% plus it actually equals how to about a 4% increase if I remember correctly, when I was working on a 4.4% increase because of your assessed value increase. But technically for the city, we are just taking the 1% plus new construction. So we're seeing about a $30,000 increase just from the 1% as, and then an additional $89,000 for new construction next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Hey, Regan, thank you for bringing your budget message and a very good explanation. And I look forward to seeing everybody on Saturday, the 30th, as we go into more detail on that. So thank you. Next up is new business item number three, to consider a resolution to authorize the use of digital and electronic signature technology and adopt an electronic and digital signature policy and approve and ratify the use of electronic signatures prior to and during the COVID-19 declared emergency. Mark, welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor Wagner, and good evening, council members. Mayor Wagner introduced, I'm Mark Orthman, the city attorney, and I'll keep this pretty short and sweet. Basically what I'm doing tonight is I'm bringing a resolution to formally authorize the use of electronic signatures and asking the city council to adopt a policy that sets the guidelines for for staff's use and council's use of electronic signatures moving forward. So really what we're looking at is trying to create greater efficiency for staff and be able to respond to what we've all seen is the demand for an electronic platform to be able to conduct business. And as a little bit of background, in 2020, the state legislature adopted the Uniform Electronic Transactions Act. And this brought us in line with 47 other states that controls how and when electronic signatures can be used. And so outside of a couple of states, this is really just getting, our state is now in line with everyone else. And cities across the state have been adopting the, the UETA as the basis for an electronic signature policy. And what it allows you to do is it authorizes cities in Covington to use electronic signatures pursuant to a policy that addresses three major things. The manner and format of electronic records, type of electronic signatures that can be used and required, and the control processes for, for taking in and signing documents. And so what the resolution does and the real, the reason for the policy in the first place is we've seen the value of electronic signatures and really it's been highlighted more so than ever before in the past year and a half. And so this will create ease, efficiency, and ultimately security for both city, for both internal and external communications. Because internally, this will create efficiencies and contract routing, reducing the paper chase and make it easier for staff to keep track of things. So nothing gets lost in the shuffle. Externally, this will provide a very secure format to ensure authenticity of the signatures, increase security, and ensure that the transaction will hold up if it's challenged. If someone tries to get out and saying, I didn't really sign that, it was that electronic signature wasn't me. This helps protect the city in case that ever comes up. So what this does is that anyone who's previously authorized for to sign something on behalf of the city, whether that's the mayor, the city manager, directors, city staff up to their signature levels, this just says they can use, they can now sign documents using a secure electronic signature software. And so what we've done here is we've delegated some authority to the city manager through the resolution saying city council adopting a policy that sets out the purposes and guidelines for using electronic signatures, but then delegates some authority to the city manager to make changes and modifications as necessary in line inconsistent with the resolution in order to keep up with ever-changing technologies. And if the, if the state laws ever changed, that we'll be able to adopt, adapt to that very quickly and be able to make sure that we're in line with the latest security protocols. So what the, so what the, the policy really sets forward is that the city manager must approve the method used to sign documents. The document, if the document is required by law to use a wet signature, that doesn't change anything. This doesn't change anything and will still be required to sign those documents and physically. The normal signature process can still be used and is totally appropriate and normal. This is just giving us another tool in the, in our toolbox. And what the, what the resolution also does is it, it does ratify and just confirms that our use of electronic signatures up to this point has been totally valid. And we've been doing everything as allowed by state law, but this just creates a, this just formalizes it. So with the procedure criteria for use, this really just says, is the individual authorized to sign? The method has been improved by the city manager, what the electronic signature must contain and making sure that the person signing it is doing so truthfully. So at the end of the day, this is really just an efficiency measure and bringing us in line with state law and putting something on the books to formally adopt a policy for the use of electronic signatures to allow city staff and council and commissioner, commissioners and everyone else who's authorized to sign anything on behalf of the city to be more efficient, provide flexibility and allow for some modifications if necessary that are in line with the resolution and potentially changing technology. So that's all I have on this tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have and I'm available as necessary.
Thank you, Mark. Joe.
So moved.
And second that.
It's been moved by Joe and seconded by Christina to adopt a resolution in substantial form as that attached authorizing the use of digital and electronic signature technology, adopting an electronic signature policy and approving and ratifying the use of electronic signatures prior to and during the declared COVID-19 emergency. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
It just makes everything easier, makes document storage easier. And in all honesty, it just means the mayor doesn't always have to come in and sign stuff. So it makes his life easier. So let's, let's make Jeff's life easy.
Nope, I'm still coming in to wet sign it. But thank you. Christina.
Sure. I'm just going to say it's time to get out of stone ages. Escrow companies use it. I don't want to name them, but most companies on this God-given earth currently use electronic signatures. It's about time we hop on the band, not only to make Jeff's what paint electronic, but so that we can do that too and make the city life easy. Thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Sean.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't know if it's still appropriate to ask questions, even though I, I appreciate this and I recognize this, this is the world we live in and that in order to conduct business, when it's impossible to meet each other in person, you know, this is something we need to do. So I appreciate the effort that went into drafting the policy, I guess. And I also appreciated the background on the fact that if law requires a wet signature, you know, this doesn't change that. We still have to do that and we can still continue to use wet, wet signatures when, when we're able to meet in person again. I guess I'm just wondering what the, and maybe this is something the city will develop. What are the safeguards around, you know, electronic signatures? How do you keep someone from, you know, stealing your electronic signature? I don't know enough about it. Nor I'm just, would like that edification for my own peace of mind of what, what are we doing to put in, place safeguards to make sure we're not seeing forgery? So.
Right. And that's a great question, Councilmember Smith. So a couple of things to think about here is all, we're looking at a variety of vendors, but focusing on on vendors such as something like DocuSign or otherwise that are nationally renowned and well-known groups that have very strong security measures in place. And while we can never prevent someone from doing something on their end that is not accurate, this gives us the greatest, much more security than we would otherwise even with a wet signature unless it was notarized because it requires someone to insert, insert in certain authentications and date and timestamps and it really creates a better, for lack of a better word, an electronic trail of how these came about, where they were signed, when they were signed and how they happened. If Mason or Krista has some more information on the security side of this and what this would look like, I'd be happy for them to jump in. But we, there are, there, that's the kind of the whole point of entering into or adopting the policy and getting software in place. Is it, all it does is create more security than we've had previously.
Mason's not online. I think he would be the one to speak to that a little better than I can, but it tracks IP address and there's a certificate that we can view all of the signing. The signing timeline to see who signed and when. So I don't know if that helps, helps answer your question.
And I've signed a lot of electronic signatures and you actually have to physically be there and write on your pad for each document as it goes through. It's not somebody just grabbing a PDF of your signature and using it. Any other questions? All right. It's been moved and seconded to adopt this resolution in substantial forms that attached authorizing use of digital electronic signature technology, adopting an electronic signature policy and approving and ratifying the use of electronic signatures prior to and during the declared COVID-19 emergency. Call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye. It is unanimous to pass and adopt this resolution. Thank you all very much. Mark, thank you for that presentation and bringing this forward. Next up is future agenda items and our next meeting is two weeks from tonight and we will have two public hearings that night. And we will also have a joint study session with Parks and Recreation at six. And it looks like a pretty lengthy agenda so far. Is there anything else that council would like to see at a future agenda? All right. With that, then let's move into council staff comments. And I will start with Chief Roberts. Welcome.
Hello, good evening. I am trying to get my camera started here. There I am. Thank you. I don't have a whole lot tonight other than to say that we're starting to plan shop with a cop this year. So hopefully I'll have some more to tell you about that. The city of Covington is looking to hopefully if COVID calms down a little bit, we'll be able to do it a little bit more like we have in years in past and look forward to telling you guys more about it.
Thank you, Chief. Is Ethan here tonight? I do not see Ethan, so it's moved to Dawn.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. And Selena. Welcome, Selena, is our new director of community development.
Hi, everyone. I just want to say hi. It's great to be back. I've been spending majority of the last two weeks getting just reacquainted with the city. So tonight was again an informative moment and it's so great to see you and get reacquainted.
Welcome back, Selena. Thank you. Casey.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Regan.
Thank you, Mayor. So we will be, actually I, I will be, I've been meeting with our lobbyists and we're coming up with legislative priorities for our next legislative session. It's, it's going to be kind of an interesting session. As you're aware, it is the 60-day short session. It's an off-budget year session, so maybe some biennial budget amendments, but with the election next year, it's unlikely they'll take many controversial votes or votes that would negatively or adversely impact their election. So, so that's happening, but we do have some good items that we'll present to council. I believe at our next meeting for discussion and then we'll finalize it at the following meeting. So that, that will be coming. We're excited to start rolling with that and again, meeting with our legislators. And then I just wanted to say thank you again to everybody who participated in the workshop over the weekend. That was exceptional. And just a update to council, I did get an email out today to all those who volunteered to be on our subcommittee to help draft the vision, mission and goals. And we're getting some, we've created subcommittee, three different committees because there was nine of us that volunteered and we'll start rolling with, with that. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Regan. Excuse me. Mark.
There is no executive session tonight and I have no further comments.
Thanks, Mark. Krista.
As you know, council typically cancels the second meeting in December, so I'd like to, or council consensus to cancel the meeting on December 28th.
Yeah, it looks like a consensus, Krista.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all I have tonight.
And Krista, thank you again for all that you did to get the workshop up and running on Friday and Saturday and providing all the snacks. So thank you for all that hard work. Jared.
Other than this is probably the fastest meeting we've ever had. I have nothing else tonight.
Thanks, Jared. Sean.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I just echo that. I really, about the visioning this last weekend, it was really inspiring to see, you know, more than two dozen people spend Friday and afternoon and Saturday morning talking about the future of their city and what they hope to see and how we might get there. So just fills me with hope to see that many people volunteering their time to, to pitch in. I also want to thank the chief. I did get an update on, on what happened during the Kentwood lockdown. I appreciate that and I guess just at some point, Regan, perhaps when we get another meeting with the Kent School District, maybe we circle back with them on communications procedures going forward on things like that. I know we've talked about it in the past and it seems like it was a fairly harmless situation, but we think at some point we need to be brought into the loop if, if something is happening at our schools and they're, they're locked down because, you know, I, as I mentioned in this and for anyone listening, kids, they're in the lockdown, they're going to be tweeting their parents or whatever. So eventually we're going to find out one way or another. So I think it it's better that it come directly from the school telling us what's going on as opposed to coming through the, the back door. So. And then finally, as all of you know, I sit on the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, just wanted to give you an update on, on the impacts of the vaccination mandate. It looks like the, the fire department has about a dozen and a half firefighters that have chosen not to get the vaccine. And the fire department has made a decision that they will transition those people into non-firefighting positions. Positions that have minimal interaction with the public as well. So it doesn't look like Positions that uh, have uh, minimal um, interaction with the public as well. So it doesn't look like any of our. Current firefighters will lose their jobs, although we will be losing uh, a number of frontline firefighters in the, in the RFA. Going forward, uh, in the next round of the um. Uh. Fire Service Academy, it is a requirement that all graduates be uh, vaccinated. So um. I guess going forward, this will be less of a problem for the, the fire department, but in the interim, uh, they're going to be down a, a few fire, firefighters going forward. Uh, that's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Christina.
Nothing for me today. I got all my energy out in the arts. Meeting, which is by the way phenomenal. Um. As always grateful for all of our commissions. Um, today. The Arts Commission got to shine bright. And yeah, just grateful for everyone here. Thank you for all the work you do and set us up for excellence and success. To say.
Thank you, Christina. Jennifer.
Um, I just wanted to thank Reagan and staff for showing up on their days off to talk about um, mission, vision and goals. I thought it was amazing. It was very inspiring and like Sean was saying, it's, it's just, it's really inspirational and. It's great to see how many people love Covington just much as we do. And um, I'm really excited to see the final product and Reagan, I appreciate you sticking with it. Uh, through pandemic and through everything else and. It was fun to get to do it in person, so um, kudos as usual, amazing work and I can't wait to see what we end up with.
Thanks, Jennifer. Joe.
I, I just want to thank everyone for the great workshop we had this weekend. It was really great to be in the same room as all of you. Uh, with, and uh, I'm looking forward to when we can do that again. So other than that, I've got nothing. Everyone enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you, Joe. Beth.
Uh, echoing what everyone said about the goals, uh, vision, mission and goals workshop, and I was really, really excited to see some of the youth council there on Friday. I, I mean. I think that's just fabulous. What a great way to, to expose these young adults to some of the things um. That, working behind the scenes at a higher level, I think that's fantastic. So I appreciate that, that element. Um, yeah, and looking forward to completing the work and, and getting things set up for twenty twenty two with the budget.
Thanks, Beth. I also want to echo the, it was amazing to see people come in on their. Day off. Um, and on their free time on Saturday, commission members, youth council. Um. Staff and everybody. I sat in on what our current mission, vision and goals were many years ago. And I know a lot of you weren't even around. Um, so I was, I just sat back and listened to all the great ideas everybody had because. I thought our current mission, vision and goals were good, but it's going to be even better. So I'm looking forward to the. What's coming out uh, with everybody and, and have nine people volunteer to even go. One step further to help finish this up is outstanding. So thank you to everybody that was there on Saturday and Sunday. Um, on SCA board, just brief update. Um, they are recruiting for people to be on next year's boards and commissions, so make sure you get your applications. Um, filled out, get through Krista and get them set up. So if you're interested in being on a board. Uh, budget for SCA, we will be bringing that back to our next board meeting next Wednesday for approval for next year's budget. Um, we've been doing very well with our sponsorships and partnership levels. Um, so we're uh, looking forward to um, continuing and we're looking at doing hopefully two in-person. Meetings next year. Um, and two virtual. Our annual meeting this December will be virtual. Um. It, we just Comcast is also the sponsor of that. We just don't want to take a chance on getting um, in person with that. Um, Sean, you brought up about uh, having. Better communications than what happened at Kentwood. Um, just let everybody know I am meeting with interim superintendent Israel. Um, later this month, so if anybody has anything that they'd like me to bring up. Uh, with my meeting with him, please uh, email me. And I'm happy to um, discuss that with him when I meet with him. And then um. I just want to say thank you to um. Our police department. Um, Chief Roberts, please pass on to every one of our. Uh, team. Um, our thanks for all the hard work they're doing, especially with everything that's going on and. The thoroughness, I mean. With the current laws that have come down through. The state and with the uncertainty of what the county is doing. I just appreciate all the hard work everybody's done and especially with uh, what happened at Safeway. Um, with that car uh, this over the weekend and then the other. Pickup truck that uh. Was found at the Walmart parking lot that somebody had grabbed a whole bunch of stuff from somebody's house, so. I appreciate the thoroughness of each of the officers and all the hard work they put out, so please pass on our thanks.
I'll absolutely do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'm looking forward to shop with a cop. Hopefully it's uh, goes back to the way it used to be. Those were fun.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. And with that, um, I have no other comments. And this will bring us into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council um, during our second comment period? Please raise your hand if you'd like to address council. Seeing nobody raise their hand and no executive session, this meeting is adjourned at seven fifty six. Thank you all very much and have a very wonderful evening. Thank you. Good night.